She is so much.
A little less.
A little bit.
Be with us this evening. Couple of things. The petitions of One Energy Development, there's been a request by them to postpone those items until August. Is that the first meeting? Or the?
Second.
Second meeting in August? So that would be items five A, item six A and B. And then at the request of Ms. Tucker, she has requested that we postpone the boards and commissions vacancies for planning commission until the August meeting. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
So moved as amended.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Wade. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, just so the public understands, we will not be considering the solar petitions this evening, nor will we be discussing the appointments to the planning commission. You're welcome to stay, but if you'd like to leave, we understand. All right, moving on, we will have the invocation, which will be led by Mr. Pugh, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Wade. If you please stand.
All right, let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today to ask you to give us the knowledge and wisdom to do what's right for the county. We come before you today to thank you for this day. Each and every day is special. Just recently, one of our first responders, Max Mays, passed away at forty-seven years old. We would like to pray for his family and all the things that they are going through at this time. Dear Lord, we ask you to be with us. We go about this meeting, that you can give us the knowledge to make the right decisions for this county and what is pleasing to you. It is in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, moving on to the citizen comment portion of our agenda. The first person that has signed up is Mr. John Marks. Mr. Marks, if you would come up, state your district and you will have three minutes.
I'll just give you a copy to start. My name is John A. Marks, Jr. I'm from District Five. Let me say, I struggle with the decision regarding the language to use in my presentation this evening. I finally reached the conclusion that the kindest thing would be to say that I am terribly disappointed in how my board of supervisors has handled the Gateway project. When I left the board of supervisors meeting on June twenty, on June third, 2025, I was convinced the board would not spend money to move forward on the Gateway project until the developer had provided in a formal written document assurances of intention to complete the Gateway project such as a schedule or a memorandum of understanding. So why am I disappointed in my board of supervisors? Let me tell you what I know and why I am disappointed. Based on a review of official board of supervisors, meeting minutes, service authority board minutes, videos, and FOIA, I know the board of supervisors has committed three and a half million dollars of taxpayer money to the Gateway project. I know the board of supervisors has no formal written commitment from the developer regarding the Gateway project. I know that in response to a direct question during the June eleventh, 2025, service authority board meeting asking, has the developer secured project funding? The response was, we are working on it. So, the answer is project funding was not secured as of June eleventh, 2025, for the Gateway project. I know the board of supervisors has no approved site plan and has no way to determine what type or how many units will be built. I know the board of supervisors has no schedule for the project. I know that on June eleventh, 2025, the service authority voted to execute a contract with Tony Construction for project number three of the Gateway project for three hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred dollars. I know that on June seventeenth, 2025, the notice of award for project number three was issued to Tony Construction. I know that on July the seventh, 2025, a signed contract document and required bonding was received from Tony Construction regarding project number three. It disappoints me that the taxpayer money is being spent on this project with no formal commitment from the developer after it appeared on June the third, 2025, that this board would not be in favor of doing such. However, most disturbing of all, I know there is no record that this board, which committed three and a half million dollars of taxpayer money, was invol- was involved in the decision to spend the taxpayer money on the Gateway project three. This board was not, I'm gonna say that again, this board was not involved in that decision to spend that money after they had committed the taxpayers to pay for it, okay?
I need you to wrap your comments.
I've got a few more minutes, seconds. I expect my board of supervisors to be-
Mr. Marks, your time is up. He's already gone over.
Well, let me just, I'll just say this. I sometimes wonder if this board has really got its head in the game relative to this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Okay, next is Jim Vasquez. If you would state your district and you have three minutes, sir.
My name is Jim Vasquez, and I don't know the number of the district, but I live in Elon. And I rise today again to once again request that the board revoke the special exception granted to Alexis Fisher and Three Oaks Manor. In accordance with the county code, any member may at any time make a motion, and all it requires is a resolution from this board to revisit this. It is incumbent upon you, the members of this board individually and severally, to acknowledge that a procedural error was made and move this board to action. When the applicant submitted the signature, sorry, when the applicant omitted the signature of the co-owner of Three Oaks Manor, she left you a way out. There's no need to concern ourselves with complicated legalese. All owners are required to sign the application, and one of the owner's signatures is missing. At any time, you can move this board to action and make that resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, is there anyone else present that would like to address the board? All right, hearing none, we will move on to our public hearings, and the item will be special exception 2025-113, posterity acres. Mr. Creasy.
Chairman, Board, good to see you all tonight. As you've mentioned, this is a petition from Posterity Acres LLC. Their request is for a short-term tourist rental of a dwelling at 146 Garrett Farm Road. The comprehensive plan indicates this is agricultural limited. I will not go through that information for you, but we do mention short-term tourist rentals in our comprehensive plan, in which we indicate that we should promote the expansion of such uses in appropriate locations in Amherst County. So, going on to the location of this property, Garrett Farm Road is a private road off of River Road. This is River Road that meanders through here. It starts along the James, and of course, as it crosses that railroad track, it sort of goes back up inland away from the James River. Garrett Farm Road comes off of River Road. The subject parcel, before you on the G I S says it's a hundred and sixty-three acres. It has since been subdivided, which I'll go over in a little bit. But before that, as you can see, Garrett Farm Road is mainly on this, on the parcel, lot thirty-three, soon to be lot thirty-three A, and then it comes down to the James River in which it serves two primary addresses, and then there are a few other lots that it serves as well. So the reason that request is before you today is that its main access to that house is a shared access drive or a private road, and it is also within five hundred feet of another dwelling. Little back history on that structure, it was an old farm building that the new property owners took over. They've renovated, received their final inspections from the building office, and now they're petitioning you all for that short-term tourist rental of a dwelling. I'd also like to bring up the zoning, so you got an understanding. It's zoned A1 agriculture residential, and everything else around it is also zoned A1. As you can see, our green is our A1 district. As I mentioned, the surrounding area in general has the same characteristics as this parcel. The parcel before you on the G I S says it's a hundred and sixty-three and point six-two acres large. As I mentioned, the applicant has already subdivided this parcel. That plat is part of your board packet, in which now the petition is only for a two-point four seven-five acre parcel. So it is, the house is keeping the same tax map number, lot thirty-three, as what was advertised, and that the residue parcel, the remaining hundred and sixty-some acres, will be lot thirty-three A. That signed plat, as well as the recorded documentation, can be found within your board packet. This request was sent to VDOT and to the county fire marshal for comments. The county fire marshal had no concerns regarding the request, and VDOT did not have any comments as their driveway comes off of a private road, so they would not have any requirements set forth there. Regarding the impact, it would allow a short-term tourist rental of a dwelling. As mentioned, VDOT has no requirements coming off of a private road, and what we've seen is traffic is similar to that of a single-family dwelling, if not less. The only difference is the occupants are more transient in nature, so keep that in mind. The planning commission recommended approval of this request, six oh with five conditions. The fifth condition added was that the subdivision plat with a revised date of June twenty-sixth, 2025, shall be recorded before issuance of a zoning permit. That has been satisfied. And in order to supplement condition number four, which states that short-term tourist rentals, all requirements of section nine sixteen, that is our zoning ordinance that governs those types of uses, staff would propose a sixth condition to the board of supervisors on top of the five, which the commission discussed, in which all occupants of the short-term tourist rental shall be restricted to the two-point-four seven-five acres as shown on the approved subdivision plat dated June twenty-sixth, 2025. Language to that extent is already written into section nine sixteen. However, staff feels it's a benefit for the surrounding property owners, as well as the petitioner itself, to add the sixth condition to explicitly restrict them to that two-point-four acre parcel. So, that condition is not found within your item summary. That is a staff recommendation to you all as a board. The other five, as well as a recommended motion, can be found within your packet. At this time, do you have any questions for staff?
Forward. Not at this time, I'm sure I will in a second. All right. Is there anyone here representing the? Yeah, I forgot about that.
I'm sorry, the petitioner is not here. He had a procedure today, and his father, Mr. Coleman, is here to represent.
Mr. Coleman, would you like to address the board?
Yes, sir. I don't really have a whole lot to say. I just guess I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay.
He pretty much covered everything.
All right, we might have some in a moment.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a couple of individuals signed up to speak. The first is Stephen Crowder. If you'd like to come forward and state your district, please.
Stephen Crowder, I'm in the Madison District. My wife and I own some property on the James that's fed. We access it via that road. So we drive past this, this building every time we drive out there, and I just wanted to give my support to them and encourage you guys to approve it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, the next is Travis Klaus. Did I say that wrong? Oh, cool, thank you.
Travis Klaus, Elon District. I also own property off of, on the river, off of Garrett Farm Road. I drive past that house every time I go dig out my property, and I'm here to show my support for it as well and to encourage you guys to do the same. They've done a beautiful job renovating the property. It looks wonderful, and I'm excited to see it getting some proper use.
Thank you, sir. All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to the petition? Hearing is seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Board, do you have any questions for staff or the representative?
I have no questions.
Okay. Mr. Creasy? All right, so I'm assuming they have the right to use the road? Otherwise, you wouldn't have approved the subdivision plat, right?
Right.
Okay. So I understand the condition, right? The, and it's two-point, what, four seven-five?
Uh, yes, yes, sir.
Acres.
Yes, sir.
So, we're gonna put a condition on there that the occupants can only use the, essentially the two-point-four seven-five acres, right? Which, fine with that, I think that makes the most sense. How are we gonna keep them from walking?
Great question.
The other hundred and sixty-five acres?
Right, great question. As I mentioned, that addition, that additional condition, supplements, condition four, which is regarding section nine sixteen of the county zoning ordinance, was explicitly states that they have to be clearly marked, if they were either a fence, property line markers. We're not too stringent on how you mark it, but a requirement of a short-term tourist rental is to do so.
Okay. Uh, this is actually, we're starting to get a lot of these short-term rentals. Are we being remitted the lodging tax?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. All right, Board, is there a motion?
Yeah.
Consideration to add that condition?
I don't have any issues with that condition. And with that, I will say this, I've known the Coleman family for a long time, so they're hardworking people, so I have no doubt this would be a great property. So with that, I'll make a motion that the board approve special exception 2025-113 with the noted condition.
Okay, any discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Good luck with your project. Thank you, everyone. Tyler, why are you back? Oh. I love you, but. All right, moving on to the consent agenda, Board, is there any questions on the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
All right, there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Pugh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Moving on to the county administrator's report. Again, the boards and commissions was postponed till next meeting. Mr. Bryant, reassessment process, board of equalization.
Yes, sir. As you're aware, the county's reassessment process is well underway. Once the reassessment becomes effective on July the first, 2026, the Code of Virginia contemplates that each locality have a board of equalization, create a hearing, appeals related to the reassessment of real property by citizens of Amherst County. Every board of equalization shall be composed of not less than three members, nor more than five members, or the number of local election districts in that locality, whichever is greater. In addition to such regular members, at the request of the local governing body, the circuit court for any locality shall appoint one alternate member in the case of a board with less than five members, and two alternates in the case of a board with five or more members. Amherst County will need five members and two alternates. All members of every board of equalization, including alternate members, shall be residents, a majority of whom shall be freeholders in the county or city for which they are to serve, and shall be selected from the citizenry of the county. Appointments to the board of equalization shall be broadly represented of the community. Thirty percent of the members of the board shall be commercial or residential real estate appraisers, other real estate professionals, builders, developers, or legal financial professionals, and at least one such member shall sit in all cases involving commercial, industrial, or multifamily residential properties unless waived by the taxpayers. What we're asking you to do in our August meeting, at our second August meeting, is to appoint those members and make a recommendation to the circuit court. We're gonna help you. We're gonna start to advertise a need for this, and we're gonna start reaching out to builders, developers, to help you with a list. What we're gonna ask of you is to try to help find two members that you would recommend and bring to the table, and then we can help facilitate and schedule interviews for you at that August meeting. So, nothing needs to be done tonight. This is for information only. We're gonna bring this up to you again at your first meeting in August, and we're gonna, again, start to advertise this to the public. But there are some credentials that I mentioned, like commercial and real estate appraisers, other real estate professionals, builders, developers, or legal or financial professionals. So there are some criteria that we're looking for. They, this is a position where they will get some stipend amount to do this.
Any questions? I'm actually looking at mine right now. Thank you, Mr. Ahearn. I'll be getting in touch with you. No good deed goes unpunished. You came to this meeting, brother. All right. Thank you. I take that as a yes. Moving on to the county attorney's report. Mr. Popovich.
Mr. Chairman, I only have one thing to mention, just a reminder that next Thursday, the twenty-fourth, we have the second hearing in the matter that was filed against the county and the Fishers relative to their special exception. The purpose of the second hearing is to have the court hear from our co-defendants, the Fishers themselves, argue their demur and motion to dismiss. My hope is that the judge will make a decision at that hearing, and obviously, I will let you know what that decision is if it is put forth. Otherwise, we may be waiting a little bit longer.
Got it. All right, thank you, Mr. Popovich. Moving on to liaison and committee reports. Planning Commission, Mr. Pugh?
Yes, well, you all have seen what we went over in the last planning commission, because it was on the agenda for tonight. The utility scale cell solar on the north end of the county along the Buffalo River was voted down in unanimous vote, and Prosperity Acres, which was just approved, of course, was unanimous vote to approve. The special exception, David Yates, that was a short-term tourist rental in a private subdivision up in Aeola that was, that was voted down. We also worked on looking at the battery ordinance and bringing that back before the board. That's currently, I believe Tyler's got that and he's working on it. I don't see him here, but I know that he's, he had a lot on his plate. It was gonna take him a little bit of time, because he's gonna have to advertise it. We have another board meeting coming up this Thursday night, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation and Cultural Development Board, that is me. Upcoming, there will be a day in the park held at Mill Creek Lake. That is on July the twenty-sixth, from eleven a.m. to three p.m. They'll have fishing clinics put on for kids, there'll be vendors, there'll be a DJ, so it'll actually be a great time. Hope everyone can come out for that. Sign up for fall soccer, and adaptive soccer is also ongoing. There is a Lancer Football Camp on July the nineteenth. Hesitate to mention this, but there was a trip to Rosie's on July the twenty-fourth. They're sending two butts full. And there was a senior social today on July the fifteenth. So our Parks and Rec Department and Board has been very busy doing great things. So we will move on back to citizen comment. Is there anyone here that would like to address the board? Hearing is seeing none. Matters from members of the board supervisors, Mr. Wade.
Yeah, a few things, I'll try to keep it quick. First off, Montellus and Bruins, they're back this season. I think the last day for sign up is July twenty-sixth, from ten to two, so for those listening, get your kids out, get them signed up. Next thing, Dixie baseball and softball teams, we've got a few going to the World Series again this year. I know of, I believe, three now, potentially upwards of five, maybe more. I was hoping we could provide some financial support, similar to what we did last year, if the board approves. So, just a thought there. And then the last thing, I wanted to, and the most important thing, is I want to say congratulations to the county attorney's office and the sheriff's office, and more importantly, to the Palio family for the recent conviction of sales. That's a win for the county, it's a win for the family. It doesn't change much, but it is a good example of the two offices working together, so appreciate that.
Yeah, and it may be too early, but when the time is right, I would like the board to go ahead and get a resolution to honor the legacy of Mac Mays, and we can wait a little while on that to let things kind of calm down a little bit. But Mac served the county in several capacities over the years with the volunteer fire department in Amherst and Montellus. He was assistant chief. He cared dearly about the county. He often contacted me in regards to different issues that we were going through here, and he would be missed. I went to school with Mac and have known him since high school, and he's always been a very nice guy, always sociable, and, and he's gonna be dearly. a very nice guy, always sociable, and he's going to be dearly missed, assistant chief of Montellus, so he's going to be hard to replace. But it's just a reminder that life is only temporary, and that we should take every day, you know, don't take it for granted and thank the Lord every morning when we wake up that we got this day, so.
Just building upon that, I ran many calls with Assistant Chief Mays over a long period of time. His passing was considered a line-of-duty death because he had responded to a call for service within 24 hours. And I think what most people don't understand is that when the tones drop, there's, you go from zero to 100 and very quickly. And that takes a toll on your body after many years. So he will have full firefighter honors, and his funeral will be Thursday. The funeral will be at 11:00 a.m. at Randolph Memorial in Madison Heights, and the family will receive visitors at 10:00 a.m. Burial will be on family property in a private ceremony. So we do send our prayers, sympathy, and condolences to Mac's family. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'll vote aye. We stand adjourned. Chairman?